Good evening, I'm going to open up the workshop session of October 11, 2016. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore. Please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please. Flags salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coast and the Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on bulletin board the same date. All notices are filed with the city clerk. City manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings. Special events, Leisha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you just print out that email that had the list up, or is it in it? The email that has listed what first thing is. I said I have a computer to print out the email.
This is what you sent me.
Oh, this is it.
This is what you sent me this too, but it's probably the same as what's in here too.
Okay. Yes, this is it.
Oh, okay. Good evening, deputy mayor and council. On tonight's work session agenda, first application is the crucial catch day, which is VNA's Breast Cancer Awareness Event. They want to hold this at their location at 1301 Main Street, but part of that will extend into Fireman's Park, which is why they're requesting permission from the city to use city property. Next is the Harvest Fest, sponsored by the Jersey Shore Dream Center, and this will be held at Springwood Park on October 29th from the hours of 10 to 3:00. The next two applications are requesting city dates. First one is from Epic Will Power. They're seeking a city date to use the Paramount for fundraiser. Next is the Annual Fishing Club Flea Market, which would be held at Convention Hall. Again, they're seeking a city date. The dates would be March 11th and 12th. And the last application I just handed you is from the Asbury Park Music Foundation. They're seeking to do a Boom Carter Jazz Event in the Transportation Center on October 19.
Is this to be added to the resolution, Leisha?
Yes. Any questions?
Senator Jaskowski?
Yes.
One question. What's the procedure when we give out city dates for like the Paramount or Convention Hall?
It goes through the Special Events Committee.
Okay. Do we have a limited number of dates?
It's up to 21 dates, is my understanding.
Okay.
We don't ever use all of them, do we?
No.
And also, you still have, the problem they have is you still have to pay for the lighting, the cleanup.
Correct.
You just don't have to pay like what you would have to pay to rent out the Paramount.
Right. It's a reduced rate.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll continue on to items to be presented by Cassandra Dickerson, Director of Community Development, 2017 Community Development Block Grant, Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, deputy mayor and council. It works. The Department of Community Development will be submitting its annual action plan on November, on or before November 15, 2016. But before doing so, the CDBG committees recommends the following applicants to receive funding. And just so that everyone knows, we receive federal funds annually from HUD. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, it's the, it's for public facilities. So it's rehabbing public facilities. So the committee went through them in consultation with Michael and Cassandra and awarded Interfaith, the Asbury Park Historical Society, Community Affairs Resource, and Boys and Girls Club. That was the final approvals.
Anyone have any questions about that? Are we good on approval?
I can tell you what some of them are for.
And it was one that you left out, and I appreciate the reasoning, because people will be asking why.
Oh, there was two applicants.
Two were left out.
Two applicants. They were denied. All good? Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue on, review of agenda items for October 12, 2016, regular meeting. Michael, do you want to go through the agenda?
Sure, ma'am.
No water? No, 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 it's all right.
Resolution 2016-401 is a special event. Resolution 402 is payroll. Resolution 403 and 404 are both amendments to the budget, which the city has received. The safer grant to hire two additional fire officers and the cops grant to hire two additional police officers. Resolution 405 is with a metered parking requirement in the downtown area. This allows free parking during the period of November 26 through Christmas Eve for shoppers. Resolution 40-
And maybe we could have Hannah do a press release on that?
Yeah, sure. Resolution 406 is this Senior Citizens Swimming Program, an agreement with the community YMCA. This actually has been done over the years. This actually is now the first time we're doing it by resolution correct way. Speaking of doing things the correct way, resolution 407 is releasing the performance bond for 621 Lake Avenue. When a project is completed, the city council should release the performance bond, and then it goes into what is open maintenance guarantee period. Normally, it'd be done by the city council. We're now bringing it towards the city council to do this the correct way. Excuse me. Resolution 2016 dash 413 is to overfund, is to refund over paying the taxes from ISTART. Resolution 408 is the bills list. 409 is rejecting the RFPs for the EPA grant. This is the grant the city received $400,000 for. We put it out for consultants to do the professional services. We feel the costs were too high, and we'll be asking you guys to reject it and go back out again. Resolution 2016, 2016 dash 410 is adopting the Monmouth County Home Consortium, fiscal year 2017 Annual Action Plan for Housing and Community Development. The city, along with three of the municipalities, is in a consortium. Home is federal money that is passed through from HUD to the county to quote unquote "the consortium" who makes recommendations. Cities, city nonprofits will receive approximately $95,000. This is in annual occurrence. It doesn't cost us anything, or the consortium with Middletown, Long Branch, and I think the other ones are right. Resolution 2016 dash 411 is for the certificate of completion for the Third Avenue Pavilion to Madison at Free Retail. And resolution 2016 dash four, sorry, dash 412 is return of certain properties. This one is interesting. In 2003, the city took four properties via interim foreclosure. Since that time, it seems that no one ever notified the property owners, and they've been paying taxes on it. So this resolution will authorize the city attorney to petition Superior Court to actually give the properties back to them on paper as they've been paying taxes on something they don't know.
How about the money?
Well, we're keeping it, because they paid taxes on it, we're just giving it back to them. It's one of those, we'll call no arm no foul unless they say keep the property and pay us back. But I don't see that happening. I hope it doesn't happen. For introduction, we have a simple vacating portion of these lane. That's ordinance 2016 dash 42. Ordinance 2016 dash 43 is amending the streets, sidewalks, and sidewalk signs work within the city right of way within Chapter 16.1. I'll get to that one in a second, because that's a little bit detailed. And then 2016 dash 44 is approving, adopting an amendment to the Central Business District redevelopment plan relating to sections titled Parking, Circulation, Cookman Avenue Retail Core, and Implementations of the Redevelopment Plan. The city planner is sitting over in the corner, and if you want to come up and give just a brief update on what that is?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This amendment, this amendment was before the council for referral to the planning board in August. The planning board had heard these three amendments. They had recommended changes to the parkings, some clarification, some modification of the, of hours for residential parking. And for the section to amend the Cookman Avenue retail, retail court change to allow limited service, the planning board is not recommending that the council approve that portion. Implementation of the redevelopment plan remains unchanged. From what the council looked at in August, that was basically cleanup language for that section of the ordinance, because it was written as if we were going to go out RFP in search for developers, and that was not the intent for the CPD plan. It's a very quick synopsis.
So it's putting limited, for anyone who didn't get that, it's putting limited service on first floor.
For the Cookman Avenue portion, the parking portion was partially cleanup language. The other was to establish a, a, a different price per parking space. That's been an option for developers in the down, in the CPD. Then, then rather than provide the required on-street parking, they could pay into a fund. And there's also some cleanup language in parking about who, about accessory parking, that basically if you are approved in the CPD for a project, that the parking is tied to the unit or the use, that it has to remain so. It cannot be turned into commercial parking.
So what is the fee that the developer would pay per parking space?
That's up to the council to decide.
Okay. All right.
And we talked about adding some language about potentially doing some stormwater management.
If, I was going to say, there, if, one of the other things that was, I should say, put in there as codified, even though it had occurred in the past without the language in the CPD plan, was putting a little bit more teeth into interim parking surface lots. Surface parking lots that are not accessory are not permitted, meaning that a pay-for, paved lot that's not tied to another use is not permitted. There are a few in the CPD that were done by redevelopment agreement, although the plan had made no provision for that. This small amendment puts the provision in for if the council so desired to, in the future, permit interim parking lots. They can for up to five years. And it's at the discretion of the council and the planning board to do so. It's not an automatic approval if someone applies thus for such. But also, it is my understanding that, that there, there's a desire to have some environmental measure put in for, for drainage. So if there's the desire, we could add language about bioswells.
Which we should, I guess, talk to Fred about at some point before.
Sure. Yes, I agree.
I was supposed to talk to you about that, Fred, and then I got to the meeting, right? Just FYI.
I also wanted to just make a point of the fact that not all of the amendments that the council referred over to the planning board were sent back to the council with a recommendation by the planning board. But the council has the final say under the local redevelopment and housing law. So the council can approve or disapprove any recommendations made by the planning board, so long as you take an affirmative vote of a majority of the full authorized membership of the council, which is three, and you set forth the reasons for deviating from the planning board's recommendations as part of the minutes. And Michelle, as part of the ordinance, has incorporated recommendations to the council, which would be part of your reasons and your rationale, it would be part of the record for why you are not complying with the planning board's recommendations. But ultimately, it's the council's determination.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. So with that, I want to take a step back to the street sidewalk and sidewalk signs, section, Chapter 16, that one of the code. This code has, this section of the code deals with street opening permits, whether it's a public entity such as Casey P&amp;L, the Water Company, any sort of developer, the city itself. Currently, we don't have standards for how you actually open a road. Under our existing code, you could literally open the road, put the dirt to the side, not cover the hole. So that's sort of a problem. So these standards are actually going to, as proposed, change that. It's going to say what you should backfill things with, when, when you can't do road openings without an emergency. It changes some language from small to large. It gives the Department of Public Works more power to work with utilities, especially the water utility, to try to get things done. One of the constant complaints we hear about from the water utility is residents saying they don't come back. Well, what happens with the water utility is they want to make sure that anything that they repair actually is fixed before they actually mill and pave. So that's usually a three-month process. At this time of the year, it goes into the spring, but they do that for a reason. They want the ground to settle. They want to make sure that their infrastructure improvements take before they actually do a final patch. But this will actually set standards on how you plate things, the backfill that you have to use, how you notify us. It sets standards for the escrow insurance, which increases it so that we can have it, except for the case of the public utilities, which are set by DPU. But this actually will set a standard that will protect us. And what I mean protect, for example, under the local bond law, a normal road is 10 years. You pay for it for a 10-year useful life. The current city code says if you cut into a road after five years, you don't have to replace it. This actually goes to the bond law where now it's 10 years. So it's going to give us more protections. We start paving streets again in the next hopefully couple months, once we get something from the transportation trust one, to say, okay developer, okay private party, okay utility, you've cut this much, you need to actually repave it. In the ordinance, I want to make one change. Robert B. Cheney has requested one change. In the definitions, it's extensive opening of 100 feet or more. We want to change that to 50. Because we have some lateral center posts together. What that is, is to protect properties. For example, you might have some utility, especially the water company again, that would cut 75 feet, and this might cover two properties. This will actually make them repave both sides of it, so you actually have not a checkerboard look across the street. It'd actually be one big uniform cut and repair. So we're recommending this. We've been working on this for a couple months now, but it'll give us some more teeth to make the city look better and protect our investment in the future as we start paying for it.
Would you just address the bond issue? How much it is? And Section C, under the permit required?
Section C covers basically the utilities. That's set by DPU standards, so we don't have anything that we can do there. It says, which may be a bond of such public utilities solely in the sum of $100,000. We usually just take an escrow with them and move forward with it. We haven't had a full-time CFO, as you know, so the escrow accounts are a little messed up with, with this. We're going to be meeting towards the end of the year, internally staffed to set up a better way to do it, because people are supposed to put up an escrow, and they don't, especially with sidewalk curb cuts. So it's a problem. But this will remedy that, that they're supposed to put up the escrow to make sure that the work is done correctly. Because we've had a couple people put in the wrong curb cuts. So we want to be able to say, you're doing it wrong, we have your money, and we can fix it. Internally, we'll have to do some work, but with a full-time CFO who's going to be managing this, we'll be able to cover those things.
Mike, when you say curb cuts, are you referring to the apron part of the driveway?
Yes.
Or the end of the sidewalk?
Both. Some people have expanded their driveway, which, no, you can't without a permit or without going before zoning. So this will actually now give us more teeth to go after those people also.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, we'll move on to matters from city council. Anybody from city council have any matters?
One thing. As most of you know, Haiti has been devastated, devastated by the recent Hurricane Matthew. And the Good News Radio Station here in Asbury Park is raising funds to send to Haiti. So if anyone wishes to donate, I would like to give you this information. It's going to go to the Good News Committee Network, Inc. It's a nonprofit 501(c). They're located at 414 Asbury Avenue, and they will be collecting the funds and forwarding on to Haiti. They are asking that we do not donate clothing, water, et cetera, because they just don't have the resources to do that. What they need right now is cash or building supplies. So if you have building supplies or cash, they will accept either. So I hope that people will listen to this and act accordingly. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
I've got nothing.
Last Saturday and Sunday, I had the opportunity of going down to the new indoor escape arena. And I tell you, I was just amazed how disciplined the people were, the way it was run. And I congratulate you on starting that. It was, I mean, it was all, it wasn't just kids. It was, I would say, like, maybe 10 to like 30 or 40 years of age. And everybody just enjoyed one another. They couldn't wait to get in. So I congratulate you for starting something like that. The Recreation Committee came up with a few ideas, and they will bring it to the city manager, the mayor, and the council. What we're planning on doing is basically doing more in the winter months. We would like to have indoor soccer, maybe towards the end of the winter. We're planning on having basketball for the older adults. That would help maybe. Years ago, they had midnight basketball, believe me, as the grind went down. And there's going to be quite two or three other activities. And I think Leisha will floor it, will bring it to the attention of the public and the council in another week or so. That's it.
So the only thing I was going to bring up was I got multiple calls about the downtown this weekend, just issues going on down there, fights in front of bars, kicked over planters. And when, when we asked to see the police reports or get some sort of report from the police department about the number of calls that took place in the downtown this weekend, there was one call for a noise complaint, none of which was for the places that people were complaining about to me on the phone and online. So I would just reiterate that if there are some bars anywhere in Asbury Park, that incidences are happening around or near or at, that you call the police, because those police reports are something we review when we're renewing liquor licenses. And if we have absolutely no report or calls about an incident that is clearly videotaped and online, it presents a problem when we try to put restrictions on liquor licenses. So just to reiterate, for those of you in the downtown area, if there's a problem, you can absolutely call me. I have no problem with you calling me, but I would ask that you obviously call the police as well.
All right. Any matters by the city manager? We have three items that are under.
Thank you, ma'am clerk.
Review.
Number two, we've already gone over. At the last meeting, the deputy mayor, Quinn, asked about snow removal procedures. We've started reviewing our internal procedures and hope to have something a little bit more concrete for the next meeting or early November meeting. The big issue is obviously going to be communication and how the alternate side of the street parking plays. So currently, we've had some internal discussions, nothing formal, just talking. And our next step is to review the emergency operations plan, just to make sure that everything is uniform across, you know, our planning documents. And hopefully, we can get that done by the end of the month, just so you guys can have an idea of how the bulk and the side of the street should be implemented. Our, remember earlier, the summer episodes out there? We ordered a new front-end loader that is larger and a new dump truck. The front-end loader is here. It's been here for about a week or two. And the dump truck, there's some issues with the body build, and they hope mid-November. But that's to be anticipated. It happened in the last one that I had ordered in a previous job. So hopefully, we have the larger dump truck by December. That's hope.
So just to the, to the snow removal point, Michael, because this is before your time, but it's, it's every year I've lived in Asbury Park. We have a very reactionary response to storms, meaning we never take the precautionary measures first, or rarely. I would say last year was probably one of the first years that we were better about it. So the sooner we have, whether it's alternate side of the street parking or whatever it is that we're going to do, and the sooner we can get word out about it. So if a storm comes at the end of October or the first week in November, we don't do what we normally do every year, which is panic and try to get the word out to a bunch of people and miss half of the population. And because we would try to use this year, I think, APTV, which uploads their schedules once a week, and that's one of the, one of the areas that is really good at capturing the seniors. The seniors watch APTV on their TV. They don't, they don't, well, I'm not sure if they watch it online, but I know they watch it on APTV because they've mentioned it to me. If we could have what our procedures are, emergency numbers, APTV could slash a slide, so we started to get the word out weeks before there's a storm. But I, living here 15 or 16 years, we never get this right. We just don't ever get it right, and it irritates me every year.
And that goes part of what the emergency operation plan should entail of A, B, C, and D happen, A, B, C, and D happen. And in most municipalities, that plan isn't updated, but that's something that you just pin to your wall of what your steps are to do something. We've had internal discussions, Kevin and I have talked about it over the last year, of, you know, at some point, we need to really do sit down and go through every aspect of it, and, you know, Kevin's the deputy OEM coordinator. So this is a good first start for the communications side, because that's really the key to everything. That's where it all starts. So next, you know, a couple weeks, we're going to sit down and go through the communications of what we have. Because it was, quite honestly, statewide, when most of these were written, they still didn't exist. You didn't have cell phones everywhere. People didn't have text messages. It just was a different time. And so, you know, Facebook and Twitter didn't warrant as prevalent. So we need to make those adjustments in the plan and how we operate.
Yeah, and just to clarify, also, when I say that we never get this right, we never get word out on this right. So we, I'm not saying that we don't, listen, sometimes we do a great job plowing, sometimes we don't. But sometimes we do a great job in whatever goes wrong with the storm power. But what we don't do a great job on is getting the word out where to park, what's open, what's closed, where, you know, where we want people to move their car if possible, and when there's a hurricane, go to Bang's Lot, whatever it is. That, that's the aspect of the planning that I'm not sure that we do a great job.
I agree with that. So then the third thing on the list is a transportation alternative program. This is coordinated by DOT. It's 100% funded through them. Tonight here is Doug McQueen with the Westlake Commission. We have a couple actions that could be taken in the next couple weeks. The commission and met with, Doug met with myself, councilwoman Chapman, and Mayor Moore about a week or two ago at one of the Westlake Bridges. The commission is interested in fixing the bridges. It is a fantastic idea. It's a fantastic project. There's some cost concerns with it, obviously. I know the engineer from the commission is still working on some of the details. That's an intermunicipal application, so it needs to have city approval, Neptune approval, and the camp association, if I'm saying that right, approval, from my understanding. And Doug, just pipe it in if I'm wrong on any of that stuff. And county approval. I didn't get there yet, because it's multi-jurisdictional.
And when you say approval of resolution?
It's resolution.
Okay.
And whatever camp does for their body. It is, as I said, a great idea to resurface the bridge back to more of a historic nature. It is, as I said, a great idea to resurface the bridge back to more of a historic nature. There's two reports, as Doug had mentioned when we were out there, that, going back to 2004, I believe, that stated these repairs needed to be done. I'm more of the viewpoint of I'd rather spend money today than spend more money later. This is going to fall into one of those things at some point in time. We, as a city, in working with the commission, would, could or possibly serve as a code-lead applicant. There's still some of those details to work out. The application's due in November. The city's also proposing its own application of Main Street streetscape to coordinate, to go along with what DOT is doing with them. Street trees, a mosaic, bike racks, benches, excuse me, I'm getting sick. Of our application, as a transitionally municipality, we get higher funding for it. But right now, that's what staff's looking at. We've talked with Doug, I talked to him Friday, there's been emails, Michelle's involved also, of how both applications can work. Obviously, the city one's a little bit easier, because it's just a resolution. The Wesley Lake Commission one is a little bit harder, because there's a lot of moving parts, especially camp association, which I've never dealt with since I've been here. So, we don't know how that's going to interplay.
And you can submit two applications that, you can submit to, you can submit the city application and the Wesley Lake application.
It would be supporting.
And then see who they funded.
It's, yes. Right now, as we understand it, it's supporting the Wesley Lake Commission. I don't, have you gotten, if you can apply on your own yet?
I haven't heard back the official word from NJDOT yet, but according to the federal statute, the Wesley Lake Commission in and of itself would qualify as a local public agency. The question could be whether or not.
You know what, Doug, if you're going to talk, can you come to the mic, just because people, if people at home want to hear it?
They work in? We turned them on.
For the record, Doug McQueen on behalf of the Wesley Lake Commission. So, the Wesley Lake Commission does qualify under the federal guidelines as a local public agency to apply on, on its own accord for a TAP grant. So, but the one question that I still need to hear back from NJDOT about and get some guidance on is whether or not a, the Wesley Lake Commission could assign a responsible charge that's a full-time employee of either municipality. Each grant has to have someone named who's a full-time employee of the local public agency. And since the Wesley Lake Commission does not have any full-time employees, we'd need to find out if one can be designated from one of the two participating municipalities.
Okay.
So, that question isn't answered yet, and it would, if, if it couldn't happen, of course, it would be fatal to the application, and we'd just figure out a way to do it another time.
One of, one of the things that Doug and I talked about on Friday was, if we can't figure this out now, this funding comes along every two or three years, really nail down a price. The mayor and I both had concerns when we were out there with Doug, that the footings might be another issue. And, and the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar application could easily turn into a 1.8 million-dollar application, where it's now, oh my God, where, where are we going to fund this between two towns? Where we would have to say, since we fund the commission, now we have to come up with half a million dollars each.
And we're talking about one bridge here, though, Michael, right?
Yeah, possibly, you don't, we don't know until we get there.
Right. So, the, the cost thing hasn't been done yet. The Wesley Lake Commission engineer from Mazer said they would work with us on that, to come up with both a cost schedule and a project schedule. But, I was at a DOT workshop where they described some of the criteria, and they were clear in saying that they like to see fully completed projects, and they also like to fully fund projects. So, one advantage here with two bridges across Wesley Lake is that it could be scalable. If both bridges couldn't be done with the allocated money from the grant, let's say it's four-hundred thousand dollars, then you'd just pick one of the bridges and finish that, as long as it could be finished. So the scalability is somewhat of an advantage, but Michael's right, that the cost could be way beyond what's granted.
Right, so Sunset's costing us a million, which is a small one.
But that's, that's a whole new bridge from scratch. This is more resurfacing, and there's, there are a list of items.
Okay.
If the council didn't get kind of a briefing sheet on that, I could hand you all one, I have some printed.
Okay. So it would be, so just so I'm clear, so Wesley Lake would, so the city will submit an application, I guess, for the streetscape on Main Street?
Yeah.
And then Wesley Lake submits an app, and this grant goes up to about a million?
Average grants are in the four-hundred to five-hundred thousand range from the 2014 awards. There is a soft cap of a million dollars for, but they, DOT said they are willing to fund over a million dollars for projects that are really compelling. Probably this project wouldn't fit that criteria.
Would not.
Would not, no.
That's multiple jurisdictions, huge amount of traffic, like a bridge bridge, not a pedestrian footbridge. And if you keep your application at the four to six-hundred thousand dollar level, you have a much better chance of being funded, especially if you can throw some local money in there. So if us and Neptune both said, here's fifty grand, now the six-hundred thousand dollar application's really a seven-hundred thousand dollar project, that's going to help the scoring as they go through with it. We'll also have the advantages of doing the Sunset Lake footbridge, so we have experience doing bridges. It is historic, so, you know, you obviously need to work with, with Shippel on things, which Michelle's been involved with, which, you know, she's an award-winning planner from a couple of meetings ago, and stuff like this. So, it's a fascinating project that would benefit the region as a whole. At the end of the day, it's camp association, timing, getting everyone on board with it, and then cost, cost, and then cost again.
And you have the dates of when all these people meet, because you're going to have to grab them like a week before they begin to get there.
Correct, I sent Michael a schedule of dates of when these resolutions would need to pass. So we understand that, we just need to reach out and make the contact to, to make sure they're all done by the November tenth deadline.
We can literally be the last one. We tend to leave right now, have a meeting scheduled on the night, the application's due the tenth. If everything works out through all the other avenues, on the night, we can do a resolution saying, you know, we support this application. It can be signed, given to Doug, scanned, and uploaded into the, into the New Jersey SAGE system that night. So we are literally, we could be the last one to let everything work its way through.
And is it more advantageous to ask for both bridges, or just focus on one, knowing that it's going to be four-hundred thousand tops?
I think we need to wait to see what happens.
Oh, okay.
The other thing too, we're talking about the streetscape, wrapping the streetscape from Main Street down.
We looked at that, but it's just going to be too expensive. Because the streetscape side, you know, you're a hundred to two-hundred thousand dollars, another six-hundred thousand dollars here, eight-hundred thousand dollar project. It's a nice project, I mean, it would really tie things in together nicely. I don't think it would get funded. I, I think that all this is, one would be a better, separate is a better application at the end of the day, because there's so many parties in, involved, is the way I would see it having to work. If you're tying in Main Street down into the bridges as one big project, the way we'd have to set up an agreement with Neptune and the camp association would also have to agree with everything. So then they would have design control on some aspects of it.
And the camp meeting association, because they own the land?
They own the underlying land on their side of the bridge, where, where the aprons of the bridge touch the Ocean Grove side. It's exempt property that's designated as a right-of-way, so technically, they own the underlying right-of-way. So they, they do need to approve that.
Okay.
It's a, I, I, you know, when we met, it was a fantastic project, and at some point in time, there has to be some consideration going through avenues to get this done, because in five to ten years, you might have, it's going to be more expensive for things. It's just going to continue to degrade, especially since this isn't clean water that goes in there, this is actually stormwater runoff. This isn't exactly, you know, pure rainwater coming from a mountain spring in this thick bottle that you shouldn't be drinking from. So, it's, we're going to have to give it considerations in the next couple of years.
If I could add to, whatever scale of the project was done, because it's a carry-down of federal funds through the state, it's required that any of the ramps be ADA compliant, and right now, we know that the ramps that currently exist on the Asbury Park side of the Wesley Grove footbridges are not ADA compliant. So, that would need to be, once you start one of them, you'd have to finish at least that one up to ADA compliance. That's why the scalability is kind of an advantage in that regard, in that if we went with a western footbridge, it's half the size of the eastern footbridge. And it's also in better condition from, from what we saw.
And on, and on the ADA side of things, by the end of this month, early November, we'll actually have an ADA plan in place. We don't have one that I've been able to find, I'm sure it was done in the, the early eighties. But the ADA ramps, as Doug mentioned, are going to be expensive, because there's a lot of grading there. It's going to be very expensive, I mean, it's probably a forty to seventy thousand dollar guess on how you can pitch that, because it's steep. But, again, you know, we'll let the engineers do that, that's just eyeballing, it's going to be, you know, it's, when it's done, it will be fantastic. We just have, you know, get it approved, get it designed, get it outbid, get it built.
If you like, I'll leave you a briefing sheet about it, if you haven't seen it already.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Matters by the city attorney?
I have no matters at this time.
Right. Can I have a motion to open a meeting up to the public? Second. All in favor, all opposed? The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner, any derogatory abuse of or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will merely rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. Each speaker, please state your name and address, for the record, please. Oh.
You break it, you buy it, Ed, you break it, you buy it. Do I have to sign for John?
I'll sign.
Jan Sparrow Words Bookstore on Second Avenue. Just a couple of things, first of all, I know the zombie walk always creates a little bit of a challenge in the evening, but I would like to say thank you to the city council for approving street closure at four o'clock. It really, we all mentioned downtown, it was very helpful to have people shopping between noon and four, as opposed to having that street closed off. So it made a tremendous difference. Secondly, the recognition that we're going to do hopefully Saturdays again as closures between Thanksgiving and Christmas again, makes a tremendous difference in our ability to do business during the holidays. So we really appreciate the city council really paying attention to and recognizing the importance of helping us figure out how to do what we do even better. And the last thing I want to mention, because I'm traveling tomorrow night, is I would like to support, I think it's Michelle's redesigning of this central business district, and Tara Weldon's hot mess wanting to move into the Passion Group. As a, part of the leadership for the Downtown Merchants Guild, one of our concerns is continuously being restaurants and bars, and having enough business downtown during the day that it brings people to our community to shop. And as she's indicated, she brings in five to six hundred individuals during the day who can work in her, plan in her store, and then fan out and shop and go to restaurants. And it would really be, I think, important for us to have someone like her on that corner, rather than the opportunity for, I mean, it's a great space for a restaurant, I'm sure, and of course, we all hear rumors, but that's beside the point. But in the meantime, we would really like to have retail during the day, because it really does help us to have more and more people in our community, particularly from January, February, March, December, where we move into those months where people aren't always sure we're open twenty-four, seven, or around, or year-round. So I'm going to, as a, the leadership team from the Asbury Park Shuffle and the Downtown Merchants Association asks that you reconsider and say yes to her wanting to move her particular shop, her event planning business, and all those amazing people that come to town to say yes to that particular proposal, because I think it's going to make a tremendous difference in our downtown area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Grant, twelve oh five, Fourth Avenue. I just have a question, what are the specifics of the Main Street TAP application you're going to apply for?
We haven't gotten there yet. We're looking at a mosaic at Asbury Avenue, which is a traffic calming measure. Trees, bike racks, and benches for now, but we're still developing everything.
And is it on a certain section?
Full length.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Inclusive of the transportation center. Bike racks there too.
Move the clothes. Second. You have a motion to a John?
All right. That's going to be fast.